All right, before I call the meeting to order, I would like to -- it's been a while since we've actually had a meeting due to the inclement weather in February. Both the regular session and the work session were canceled. So I haven't had an opportunity to acknowledge that one of our board members, Mrs. Pat Corrigan, resigned from the board. And at this point, I'd like to acknowledge that her service, which is many, many years, dating back at least ten years, Bo, I don't know exactly how long, but at least ten years, during which time she also served as chairman for several years. And we will miss her service and just wanted to note in the record how much we appreciate the time and effort she's given to the Village of Southampton. With that said, I'd like to welcome our new board member, Mr. Alan McFarland, a longtime resident of Southampton area, who certainly brings intelligence and experience and historical knowledge of this area to the board, and we welcome his arrival.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to call to order the March regular scheduled meeting of the Southampton Village Planning Board. Can I have a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll begin the meeting with the tennis court section of the agenda, beginning with 500 Old Town Road LLC. Kathy, I think you've received some updated information from the applicant.
Yep, the drainage has been revised, and that has been reviewed by the village engineer and found to be acceptable. Unfortunately, the radius map still reflected the old system, so we've asked that they make things too consistent, and then once that is done, the plan can be approved.
The applicant has been advised of that?
Yes, at the work session.
At the work session.
Right. So if they can get us revised plans, we could move for a decision at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Is there a representative from the applicant here? No. So they're aware of that, so...
I just follow up also, just to make sure.
Right.
Okay. Make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes the 500 Old Town LLC until the next scheduled meeting, which is...
I'm looking right now.
Thirty.
On the thirtieth.
Thirty.
March thirtieth.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next tennis court application is Romit Shaw, 224 Downs Path.
This one, there was a question as to whether the test hole that was provided was adequate because it was off-site. However, they have provided evidence that's acceptable to Aldo and Fioli that the groundwater is at the depth of at least twenty feet in the area. So that test hole information is sufficient. They've also revised the plans to show an adequate separation distance between the bottom of the pool and groundwater if it is encountered, but it will not be at the same degree according to the test hole information. And the landscaping has been revised as well. So this one too is ready to move ahead with a decision.
So it would be a motion to approve the application pending decision, or just adjourn pending decision?
Adjourn pending decision.
Adjourn pending decision. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's 224 Downs Path. Last one is 20 Gin Lane.
Simoli, this one required edits to the drainage plan, and the applicant had submitted those in the past week. And Aldo reviewed this right before the meeting and found to be acceptable. So this one also is ready for a decision.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn for decision, the JV 20 Gin Lane LLC application.
I will second if we've got this water table issue solved down there.
We do.
Okay.
They've used much smaller pools and...
More diameter pools, ten-foot diameter pools than they now.
Okay, because remember, the bite of the water there varies a lot by the month.
Yes, they've increased the... Before, I think they had a foot, and now they've got oh-two feet to the bottom.
But it's up from where they estimated by a November hole, as I remember the application, as to where the November hole showed was the top of the water table.
That's why we raised it a couple of feet above groundwater as it was shown initially in order to provide the flexibility and increase the capacity of the leaching pool.
I got that, but you think the raise covers the fact that if the water table varies by three or four feet, it's still all right for right at the edge, right at the edge of Agawam?
That's the game plan. That should suffice.
Okay, well, that's the opinion we had, so what do we need to do then?
I made a motion, you can second it if you're...
The motion is to...
To adjourn for a decision.
Adjourn for a decision. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving into the public hearing segment of the meeting, Bishop's Grant, 333 North Main Street.
Good evening, board members. Wayne Bruin, O'Shea, Marc Sensick, and Bruin. We've submitted affidavits, posting, mailing for the last meeting. We're advised that gives the board jurisdiction for this public hearing. Just as a reminder, this is a four-lot subdivision on the north or the southwest corner of County Road 39 and North Main Street. It's a little over four acres of property in the R 12.5 district. And my client is only proposing four lots, four oversized one-acre lots, in fact, a little larger than that. And all the lots are to gain access via a common driveway. This map was reviewed at length by this board in 2007 and 2008. In February 2008, received final conditional approval, which was subsequently extended, but however, has since expired. That this particular map is identical to that map. Your consultants have prepared a resolution. We've reviewed that and discussed all the elements of that, including preparation of the SWIP plan, which we believe has been forwarded already to Nelson &amp; Pope. We received last week health department approval, reapproval of the map as well. We understand a new condition related to screening of flag lots. We have hired Eris Design to prepare some landscape plans for the flag portion, particularly the driveway, the south side of the driveway, which was one of the comments from our neighbors. And we otherwise would accept all the conditions that are in that resolution. So if there's no other questions or comments from the public or the board, we would hope you'd close the hearing tonight and perhaps consider reapproval of the...
This may have been addressed at the work session. I'm sorry I wasn't there, but there's a letter in the file from Mr. Judson at 305 North Main Street requesting more landscaping between his driveway and yours. Is that addressed, Mr. Boone?
Actually, so you understand where he actually lives. I don't know if the consultants have an aerial photograph, but my understanding, immediately to our south, is a flag lot in the back. And you can see that driveway that goes there, and then Mr. Judson's house is here. So he's actually separated from our property by the driveway that goes to the south. Two gentlemen own this parcel. Were here at the work session last week. We reviewed the plans with them, and they were satisfied with the plans as they are. They were most concerned where the building envelope for the rear lot was, and they're happy to see where that is located. We also advised them that we had undertaken to get Eris Design and provide for what we believe will be some sort of hedge plantings along the south side of the common driveway, which is essentially, when you look at the face of these plans, there isn't anything. And I think that addresses Mr. Judson's concerns as well. And I think that's a condition staff has in the conditions of approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any additional public comment? Do they have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second part of this is to authorize the building department to authorize an appraisal for the property, and so that needs to be done by resolution, and then the fee, the cost of that would be passed on to the applicant.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to Pep 2 Holdings, which we...
Is there going to be any consideration on the resolution that was offered, prepared at this meeting?
I didn't see a resolution. I have Suffolk County Bank, J.J.
I feel it's fine to move forward, but I mean, it's essentially the same as the map that was approved in 2008, and it has additional protections in it with respect to the flag lots being needing the landscaping approval by the planning board, treating them as flag lots, and doing this additional plan by yours for mine.
Counsel?
How critical is this tonight, Ray?
Well, given the hearings, we lost a whole month because of the two hearings. It was anticipated that we would have been in this position last month, being that there was no concerns, and this was approved previously. And now we're here a month. Like I mentioned, my client is moving rapidly ahead. I think that we have these conditions would be...
I have no problem with a broad head.
Yeah, and there's no public...
And there's enough conditions, there's enough conditions in the...
Unless you want to eliminate some conditions.
Well, you're getting the greater... This would be a conditional approval.
Yeah, motion to approve the conditional resolution of approval dated...
Yeah. It would be conditional on getting this appraisal and the fee done.
Mm-hmm. That's one of the conditions, actually.
I just didn't see them.
Is there a date on this?
Number 10, condition number 10, authorization plan to work in order to obtain...
Basically, everything is February 4th. I don't know if that's the date of this.
Just put a date on it, dated...
The date would be just filled in at the top.
Yeah, just date it at the top, so...
Date it today. Date it 3/2.
The other thing that we would add at the bottom is that because the public hearing was held on March 2nd and not on February 2nd, we would just add March 2nd at the bottom where it says it on the first page.
February 2nd, and in its blank?
Yeah.
Right, and March 2nd.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional resolution of approval of the platform, the subdivision known as Bishop's Grant.
Dated...
Dated 3/2/15.
You have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, yes.
And this should go to Annette, right?
Thank you, board members. I understand that you took this a little out, a little unusual, but given the unusual circumstances, the prior approval, thank you.
Would you hand that to Annette, Alan? That just got to go to Jackie.
Jackie, okay. I can actually modify that, and I'll modify it, and I'll do it in the morning.
Do you want me to give a strike to them now?
You can just write a note on it that I'm going to update it with that one minor change.
There was something in your notes from the work session.
I would recommend close the public hearing before the decision.
Pep 2 Holdings, 200 David White Lane.
Good evening. Robert Conley of Fowfords, 50 Station Road, Watermelon, York 11976, for the applicant, Pep 2 Holdings. The last time we were here in January, we had submitted to the board a revised landscape plan, and that was adjourned for the homeowners association and the rear of the property to review that plan. I've spoken with Reza Abrahimi of Tumi Latham, who is the attorney for the Dunes at Southampton, and they've advised us on February 2nd that the landscape plan adequately addresses their concerns. So at this time, we would just ask that the public hearing, at this time, be closed.
Thank you. Is there any additional public comment? And I'd like a motion to close the public hearing on Pep 2 Holdings.
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Southampton Real Estate Partners, 85 and 95 Down East Lane.
For the applicant, Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton. As you may recall, this is an application for sketch plan approval for a two-lot subdivision at the end of Down East Lane. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice, so bear with me. You may recall also that previously, this was a two-lot situation, one lot being oversized and the other lot being undersized, but they were inadvertently merged through the actions of someone other than yours truly. And in any event, the proposal before you now is to create two conforming lots.
Yes.
And the planning consultant has requested some additional information, which we submitted a week or so ago, including nitrogen loading analysis and also an updated environmental assessment form, as well as a more detailed comprehensive landscape plan. You may remember, this is also, this is a sketch plan, and we're not to the final stage yet. We understand that as we progress toward final approval, we'll need to provide more detailed drainage information and certain additional information, although we have submitted a letter from the Reiner Group indicating that all drainage will obviously be retained on the site. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. I have a representative of Interscienc, Emily Levey, if there's any question of her. We would hope that since this has been going on, that we could close the hearing on this if possible.
I can say that I did review the EAF and the minor modifications that I would request, and I can get that to you.
Okay.
As far as the mass balance, I had sent you a voicemail that the math is correct. I don't know if the assumptions are correct, so I'm still waiting to hear back from staff on that.
Okay, I know you were still looking at that.
Yeah, so we need a little bit more time to review the mass balance analysis. Those don't address the, some of the concerns that Allo brought up about, you know, the zoning and whether a future landowner would want to build a house that's bigger than the footprint that is shown on the lot at this point and have improvements that you would expect in the Village of Southampton. So those concerns are outstanding, so I don't know if there's any modifications to the line that could be considered. That might be something, considering that that house is going to come down on the lot that actually is improved at this time.
I think...
That may free up some space.
I think the real constraint we have is the fact that there are wetlands, not so much the division line. I think it's really the wetland setbacks, and we're trying obviously to maximize those. But obviously, anything that would happen with the development of that lot would have to be reviewed by the Board of Appeals. So there'd be some control there. But I'd be happy to invite your comments once you have them on the nitrogen.
Mr. McFarland, Mr. Lemansky?
We just have to wait for the old runoff and absorption results that people give us, and it's the two better lots.
And you have received the Interscienc, but you haven't...
You've got this from, you have this from Reiner, right?
You haven't vouched it.
Yes, I checked the math. I can see that part. But there's some assumptions about the multipliers that we need to check the references. So at first glance, I mean, the math works, but, and the math shows a dramatic reduction in the nitrogen.
Yeah.
It's about 50 percent, which is really significant.
Oh, yeah.
So I think that's a good thing.
So would you recommend we hold the public hearing open, Kathy?
I would, one more month, I would say.
And then we can hopefully, between now and then, we can communicate and resolve it at the next meeting.
Great.
Thanks.
Make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes the 85-95 Down East Lane.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving into subdivision review, Paul Robinson, 105 Little Plains Road.
Oh, we have an applicant request a six-month extension.
I think my letter is self-explanatory.
Right.
I thought I didn't just vote it upon.
I don't think we voted at the work session. I think we just went past it, so... Make a motion at the request of the applicant to extend for six months.
Well, no, to the regular meeting in October. Make it a specific date.
Okay, extend to the regular meeting in October.
Yeah, was that all right?
Actually, I requested September, but October would be great because when you have your health department.
I didn't see the letter, yeah.
So I think October would be grateful.
Regular, regular meeting of October.
Okay.
That works. Which, fifth?
Okay.
So I would advise that I will make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn the 105 Little Plains Road until the regularly scheduled October 5th meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Mr. Bennett, you've requested adjournment of...
Yes, I'm getting there, but thank you for your patience.
Until next month, John?
Yes.
Make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes the OIA associates until the...
Regular meeting in April.
April, the regular meeting in April, April 6th.
You have a second?
Any second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What are you doing, New Orleans?
550 and 554 Hill Street.
For the applicant, Gilbert G. Flanagan, 21 South Main Street, Southampton. This is one of those aging cases that's been on your calendar for a number of months. I've submitted some additional information to refresh and revive the application, and I recognize that we really haven't had a chance over the past few months to discuss it, so I'd like to tell you basically what we had submitted for your consideration at this time. We did submit a very slightly modified design for the subdivision, which was prepared by David Saskus, last revised January 14th. And essentially, what that did was it modified by seven feet the division line between the northerlymost lot and the two lots to the south of it. It's a very, very...
Excuse me, Gil, I've got a January 29th.
No, there's a January 14th. Maybe that's when it was received. That's probably what it was received.
It's dated...
It's 550, right?
Look at the very top, the last revised date is at the top. Oh, and what you may be looking at is where he signed it.
Yes, that is what I'm looking at.
The actual revision date is in the lower right-hand corner.
Okay.
The 29th is the day he printed it and signed it.
Okay.
The revision date is the 14th.
All righty.
And what I did to make it a little bit easier for you was I, in the package, gave you a copy of the most recent previous revision, which was last revised October 29th, so you can compare the two. And as you see, the differences are minor. Also, on January 30, I submitted a letter which described the differences both in terms of the area of each lot and the width of each lot. We should take a deck of this, you should have that, so you can refer that to the January 14th. The southerlymost lot didn't change at all. There was a minor shift in the division line for the lots above it. Reason for the shift was pointed out in my letter of January 30th. There is a possibility that my client would like to take the house that's presently located at 550 Hill Street, excuse me, and locate it onto the northerlymost lot. And in order to do that, we wanted to alter the building envelope slightly, so we have designed the new subdivision so that the house, if my client decides to move that house onto the northerlymost lot, it would fit within that building envelope and not require any variances, assuming the Board of Appeals approves this. As you know, the Board of Appeals also has jurisdiction over this application. Something else we submitted was an updated report, environmental and land use report by Dave Emalida, who's in the audience tonight, who can address a few things, trying to address some of the comments that were made in the Nelson, Pope, and Voorhees' most recent memorandum. One thing that I thought we had submitted, and I'm not sure that we did, but if we didn't, I'll submit it now, because it's referred to in the Emalida memo, is the landscaping plan. There was a request for a proposed landscaping plan, and we also have an existing conditions plan, which I'd like to offer up now, if I might be able to do that. Then I have a, as I say, an existing conditions plan, which shows not only photographs, but also balls out the landscaping that's presently on the site.
Here you go.
Okay.
I will mention to you that the landscaping plan, the proposed plan, does show the lot layout previous to the one I've submitted, so we know we'll have to amend that, so that the division to reflect the seven-foot shift. But suffice it to say that the landscaping that's shown on it will not change as a result of that minor adjustment, but we will make that adjustment. So that's really where we are with this, and we're hoping to address the concerns and issues raised by the consultant. I would ask Mr. Emalida to say a couple of words about the report that he submitted, and I believe he has some more legislative photographs, which he'd like to submit, showing the history of the house at 550 Hill Street.
Good evening, members of the board. David Emalida, environmental and planning consultant for this project. You have received a memorandum from me dated February 27th, and I'm handing in an original autographed copy for your records. That memorandum addresses the concerns of your environmental consultant in her report to you in December 2013. There were three concerns, remaining concerns dealing with aesthetics, impact on historic, potential historic structures, and impact on character of the community. So that February 27th memorandum addresses those points. In that memo, there are several photographs, and I'd like to hand in to you copies of three of them, which are at a larger scale, and will help you understand the points, or hope will help you understand better the points that we're trying to make in the text.
There are those...
I'll wait until you actually can look at the three photos, because I want to tell you what they are in my own words, in case you have any immediate questions. The top photograph comes from the town of Southampton's website, June of 2014, and it shows the two parcels, 554 and 550 Hill Street. 554, the westerly parcel, contains the moving and storage business and the dwelling, one dwelling. 550 contains the second dwelling. And we see the budding properties, 538 Hill to the east, 76 Captain's Neck Lane to the south, 520 Hill to the west, and 22 through 62 Captain's Neck Lane on the west. So that is pretty much the current situation. You'll notice the, there's 19 vehicles also parked on the moving and storage parcel. Now, the next photo, let me take you back, takes us back to 1930. We found in the archives of the Suffolk County Planning Commission a series of photographs, and they're actually on the... and they're actually on the Suffolk County Planning Department's website. You have to jump through some hoops to get to them. But we visited the planning commission and were able to take an actual photograph of the actual hard copy photo in their archives. Unfortunately, the scale is at such a small scale that when you blow it up, it's kind of, it's kind of fuzzy. But what's clear is 554 Hill Street in 1930, the moving and storage business had become established. And you see the, on the southern end of 554, you see the, one of the early buildings on that business. You'll see 550 Hill Street. There is a dwelling, and it appears, what appears to be an appendage to the south of it, there's quite a few of smaller accessory buildings. I can't describe to you what they are. This is the best record we have of it. And this, on the next page, takes you back to 1927. This is a portion of the Hughes and Cinquin Southampton Village Bird's Eye aerial photograph, the original of which you can see in the Rogers Memorial Library on the lower level. It's hanging on the wall, and it gives you the overview of the entire village. We were able to blow up the portion of the village that shows 550 Hill Street, which apparently existed at that time, 1927. And you'll notice the shape of the main structure, which is the black-roofed structure, and a rear L or gable appendage with an attic window and a chimney. Now, this is sort of important to the entire discussion, because the only thing that's remaining right now is a chimney. So this building has undergone a significant degree of alteration through the years. The memo, my memo of February 27th, contains additional information documenting those changes. And I'm not going to lead you in any direction. I'm going to let you read what you read, and we can pick this up at a later date. But I think these points are germane to the historic nature of 550 Hill Street, and also the, says something to the character of the neighborhood. So that's my opening remarks. If you have any questions right now, I'll be happy to answer. I think Kathy may have had a day or two to look at my memo, but she may, may want to reserve comment until, until the next meeting. I'm not sure. Okay. Thank you.
You have not responded to the, to the work session changes or anything that you've received yet?
No.
No.
I started to review the memo that Mr. Emalida submitted, and I got about halfway through it on Friday, so it didn't work this weekend. So, but I will continue to review it. Where we were with this project is that we had gotten to a point where under the secret review, we had reviewed the part one, we had done a part two, and identified these three issues as being outstanding, and, you know, the project didn't necessarily mitigate the potential impacts. So the board was at a point of going back to the applicants to do a little better to the landscape plan, to show that this can work, or do we go in a different direction? And the secret means that you sort of caused that, and you're on environmental impact. So that's where it ended, and we'll give more information, and that's what the applicant did. They've done that at this point. They've submitted some additional information to support the application, and so we have some time to review it. And just on the perspective of this review, we've reviewed it from a secret perspective. We haven't really reviewed the map from the perspective of its compliance with the code requirements for sketch plans. So that's another layer that probably makes sense to do at this point.
And Mr. Flanagan, just for Mr. McFarland's benefit, because he was not here when we started the discussion about this several months ago. Certainly a couple of questions that I think, I imagine would have... Where is the right-of-way coming onto Captain's Neck coming from? How does, how does that evolve with this plan?
That evolves because that is actually owned by a person who controls the subdivision. It's a, it's a related party.
And he's willing to grant an easement?
Yes.
Across the property to allow the, the flagpole?
Yes, he is.
Access.
Yeah.
And... So basically, the lot's going to be divided, so two lots would get access from Captain's Neck, and two lots are getting access from Hill Street?
The proposal is to have three lots get access from Captain's Neck and one from Hill Street. The reason you see an easement shown on the northerlymost lot is the fire department suggests it'd be an emergency fire access only. And having the three southerlymost lots take access off Captain's Neck is of some significance to my con...
And as configured now, the driveway from Captain's Neck accesses the three southernmost lots, and just the northernmost lot is accessed from Hill Street?
That's correct.
And the driveways do not connect?
I'm sorry?
They don't kind of loop together and connect to make a throughfare from between Hill Street?
No, 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 they don't. They do not. No, and I, we think that that's a plus, because there would be less traffic on Hill Street, which is, fewer curb cuts are generally better.
I mean, I can't see this, it's to make four lots, and something here are the building lots. Existing, there are sort of two houses there.
There are two houses and a commercial, actually an industrial use, so you have three uses there.
I know the site, all that part.
I'm sure you do.
There's a little house up on the left, and there's a house sort of, they're, which one is, are they both, is it four brand-new houses?
There'll be four brand-new houses. There's a possibility, and my client hasn't fully decided, as I say, to take the house at 550, possibly moving that one to the northerly lot. That's possible. But there would be three additional houses.
550, and there's 554, there's a house in 554.
Correct.
And that goes down.
That would go down.
At least three, maybe four, brand-new houses on the lots.
Right.
And as I understand it, with all the ancient history, which David just outlined for us, this sort of lies on a line between two different zoning areas, too.
Yes, it does. That's right.
A lot of stuff to the west in that area has already been improved to its maximum dimensions.
Right.
Two to go, I believe.
If you look at the aerial photograph that Mr. Emalida presented, that's a really good depiction.
To the west?
That's all developed.
It's no man's land now.
Yeah, to the west, it's all pretty much one acre, and smaller lots.
To the, but to the east, what I call no man's land.
Yeah, to the east.
Clearly, an area of what's left on Hill Street that has a near-term future of improvement from what you can see, depending on timing and greed. Until you get over to the old Rose Estate.
Right.
Okay, so this would be moving into, into a small portion of that area then, if this is the plan?
Part of it, yeah, that's correct. That's correct. As I say, the zoning line does go through the property.
I was assuming that the, these wonderful old pictures are of the 554 house, not the little tiny, you said a revision, David, I think, but...
They'd show the 550 house.
The 500 house, which is now pretty tiny compared to what the pictures look like, as opposed to the 554 house. I'm sorry? The 550 house are the pictures, not the 554 house?
That's the 550, that's the...
Five, 550, okay. The art, the distinction between the two properties comes from the State Historic Preservation Office. They have made a, in two separate letters, made a determination that 554 Hill Street, containing the business, is not contributing to the historic district of the village.
Oh, no, I understand the history part, yeah. I've been through that on another matter in that neighborhood before, because it's, that and the Hill Street is under focus now, from what I can tell, both sides, tap that in, because we had more commercial buildings here that are going to change. There's kid shops, and, you know, the instants may leave, and that stuff, there's about four places there that were sort of commercial as you came into the village. This is just one that happens to be on the south side. There were really only two. There was, I was, just forgive me, I forget his name, he did plants and plumbing.
Phil Thompson.
Yeah, Thompson was down, he was the furthest to the village.
Right.
He was the first to go of those to become fully residential. This is the only one on the south side, so that's what other people working on this stuff have told me in the past. So I'm trying to get an idea of how we, how this board is forced to deal with the residual allocation of private property that's left.
That's true. That's what, that's...
Because when I, but when I look at the maps, it looked to me like that house, the well's been the, although it's not as set far as back, what David says is, what Gil says is the 554 house, which is a pretty substantial structure compared to the little ones that's at the edge. If you look at it, the one on the left is a relatively small house. You said it's maybe just a chimney. It was shrunk, the 550 house, the trunk, from those pictures.
Okay, yeah, well, okay, the pictures, I think the pictures show you that what's there now is not, is not what was there?
Right.
Then, and that's perhaps why the village never nominated 550 in the first place to
Absolutely.
As part, to be part of the district.
Yep, I can see that.
So, but the bigger, the bigger picture is the elimination of non-conforming users. And how that process gets handled depends on the facts of every, of every individual property.
It seems to me all we're deciding is the elimination is unanimous, from what I can tell. Community says that elimination is unanimous. All we're now dealing with are the details of the outcome for getting rid of the unanimous decision. And I'm just trying to get a feel, I'm trying to put in light of what else is going on in the neighborhood and the neighbors, only a few of whom I know, but many, some of whom have spoken up and some haven't.
One thing that's important to note about this, that this particular use, if you look on the table of use regulations for commercial districts, this is an industrial use. It's not a business, not even like Ensteins. So this is the, as far as I know, this is the only industrial use in a residential zone in the village, and that's, industrial is typically more intensive than a business use.
I've used them. I've been a client, I understand that. That's not a secret either.
That's an important distinction. That's, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows.
It's been a graceful industrial use.
They're quite graceful about it. Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Flanagan, you would, with your...
We could certainly keep it open, and so we can...
This is not our ordinary official public meeting, it's just continuing discussions. Never has been posted as a formal public hearing.
By way, just by way of history, some of you may not recall, we initially filed the application with the Board of Appeals, and the Board of Appeals suggested it be referred to you, so that's what we've done. We've actually made a sketch plan submission, but two applications are related.
So you'd like to adjourn it for all purposes at this point?
Yes, I think there may be some other comment, but yes.
Okay. Would you make a motion to that?
Well, I think, are there public comments?
This isn't a public hearing.
Oh, this isn't a public hearing?
Yes, but you're, you need to hear public comments.
It's not a public hearing.
But they're still entitled to make a, they're still, it's an open meeting.
Would anyone like to make a comment?
Good evening. David Kersht of Egan and Matthews, 241 Pannagel Road, East Hampton, New York, for PHB Realty Corp., the owner of 48 Captain's Neck Lane. As you all know, it's been some time since there's been a substantive discussion of this application, and we'd just like to have, urge the board to go back through some of the submissions from both Nelson Pope and the board's prior comments on this matter. The EAF Part II identified nine potentially large impacts, most relevant, we feel are, that it actual conflict with officially adopted plans and goals. As revised, I don't feel, or our client doesn't believe that that's been adequately addressed by shifting seven feet between a few of the lots. And also, this is from the Nelson Pope memo from November 25th, revised December 2nd, which it states, "The plans do not illustrate the adequacy of the site to provide sufficient area and access to accommodate four home sites." Again, the, the current revision does nothing to address that. And then I'd like to cite back to the planning board's own minutes. From November 25th of 2013, where they requested an alternative layout of either a three- or two-lot subdivision. And again, I think they, they shifted 1,000 square feet, and none of that adequately addresses the substantive concerns raised by this board and their consultant at prior meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, the board has not really addressed the revised plan to any extent at all yet.
Right. I understand.
Would anybody else like to comment?
Make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes the 550, 554 Hill Street until the April?
Regular meeting.
April 5th?
April 6th.
April 6th, regularly scheduled meeting.
April 6th, is that it? I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Harkonnen and a Treatise 408 First Neck Lane?
We're awaiting Health Department approval for the subdivision. Soon as we have that, we'll be able to complete the final application.
Do you request an adjournment to the next meeting?
Make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes Harkonnen and Treatise until the April 6th regularly scheduled meeting.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pending written decision for South Lane Properties?
They've submitted in the file. Should be one of them hooking up over there, if you can find it.
This is, this is South...
Do you have one? I have a copy, too.
We have it.
You have it, Hill? Dave, you have it there?
I have one here.
Okay.
Thanks.
Mr. Robinson, you want to summarize it?
This is just the sketch plan approval for the, the application, and affirmative vote on the motion will be to approve the sketch plan as submitted.
This is a division by the beach, right?
Yes.
Toward the beach? You guys have been through this, as I remember.
Fairly straightforward.
Yeah.
Sketch plan at this stage.
Vote here?
We have a motion to vote?
Make a motion to accept the resolution of sketch plan approval?
I second that.
All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a copy by any chance? I might be able to borrow it.
You have yours? I can give them mine.
Thanks very much.
I'm asking both sides. I hope she's not here.
I'm into Jackie. Okay.
To Jackie?
Each plum, we don't have Patrick here. And the applicant has requested adjournment to March 30th. Is that correct, Mr. Flanagan? With regards to Beach Plum, you've requested an adjournment?
Yes, that's correct.
We thought we might get the negative declaration voted on this evening, but because Patrick is not here, I called earlier, but he didn't.
To March 30th? Yep.
Make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes... Make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes the Beach Plum Meadows, 248 Moses Lane, to the-
April, April regular meeting.
The April 6th regular meeting.
Right.
Okay, 4-6.
Do you have a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
4-30, got it.
Okay, in the site plan review section-
Suffolk County.
There is a decision for the Suffolk County National Bank.
She'll remember was a request to delete the tax lot from the site plan for the bank. The records were not fully complete as to the approval of the previous site plan, but there was an issue regarding the location of a sign on the subject parcel to be deleted, but the sign was never built. There's really no impediment to deletion of the property, and the decision therefore so approves the amendment of the site plan to allow for the transfer of the subject tax lot.
That was the swap down the street.
Exactly.
It's not so much a swap, it's just a deletion from the site plan.
It seemed to make sense.
Yes, yes.
What about every heading you can think of? Like, was it clarification?
So, make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
You'll make that motion, I'll second it.
All in favor of this resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't have anything further on the Hibod, and I will have a decision for the board for the Pelosi application for the regular April meeting.
Original of this around someplace.
That takes us to Crease Properties.
A copy of-
Which we're waiting for.
We were actually going to ask for that to be adjourned until the regular, next regular meeting.
Okay, great. Make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn Crease Property 16 Windmill Lane until the next regularly scheduled April 6th meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What happened to Pelosi?
Uh, pending a, just a written decision.
It, I noted that Mr. Bregman had sent a letter to the file regarding some sort of guarantee that the 30-foot truck would be able to handle the duties that it would need to do to service the property.
That the 30-foot truck could-
Was that addressed?
It hadn't been addressed, I don't believe it was addressed in writing, but the architect did do the-
Didn't he do a radius map and show that it could spin?
They confirmed with the engineer that that would be feasible, so that way, that's why he did the plan.
Right.
That's what they said at the meeting.
We had an acceptable, we had an acceptable turnaround.
His, his comment is, is a 30-foot truck big enough to handle all the stuff?
They're, they're saying it is.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Even if it wasn't, they'd have to make two trips, right?
Right.
So, we're waiting a pending written decision on that.
Pretty good trucks, okay.
Moving on, 9 Main Street.
Kathy, I think we're clear on that, and I'll have the decision for the April regular meeting.
Make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn 9 Main Street until the April 6th meeting?
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On the matter of Starbucks coffee, there is a resolution pending, which has been developed, but we don't have a quorum to vote on it.
Correct, so I suggest you just adjourn, keep it on the agenda.
Oh, he's himself. Recuse, there's only two of us for this one?
Yeah. If I can, though, there's a, at most would be a confirmatory resolution-
Yeah, just keep it on the agenda.
Because there was a July, in January, there was a January actual affirmative vote of approval.
Right.
I just-
What are we going to do, Bob?
Just confirming that. It was subject to the written decision, now we have the written decision, it should be officially adopted.
Okay. So, having already voted in favor of the resolution, now we have the actual resolution.
Yeah, I just, my, my concern is that, that the building department, there was a little bit of confusion. I know, it's sort of troubling, because I know, I was in, in the building department one day, and you were, they, you were kind enough to respond in a call that came from either Diane or Jackie, that there had actually been a resolution of approval. I just want to make sure that we can pull our building permit.
Having already voted in-
Yeah, that's the problem with these preliminary type of votes, without the written decision, but this is now in writing, John, so the building department has had any issues, you can ask him to call me.
Perfect, that's all I need, thank you, thanks, Bob.
So this will be adjourned for all purposes to the April meeting.
The motion to adjourn the Starbucks, the vote on the Starbucks resolution to the April 6th meeting is approved.
Have a quorum at the April 6th meeting.
Right.
Have a quorum.
J.Jet Holdings, 199 Mariner Drive.
There's a decision.
Yep. Which is, should be ready.
An egg deck for this.
Okay.
You've prepared the neg deck, and we are going to vote on the neg deck, is that correct?
That's correct.
Make a motion to approve the neg deck as submitted?
You second that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you could sign that copy, there's one that I actually changed it because they just moved from Hill Street to 23 Main Street, so if you could just sign where it says contact person, the Health Department has been asking for signed copies now, so I'm going to add a line in the future.
Okay, all right.
And then, are we adjourning this for all purposes?
Adjourning for all purposes. Now, with regard to the decision, I had submitted a letter or a memo to the file, and Kathy, that the site plan did not have a required recitation on it, that the applicant acknowledges the decision and will abide by the decision to improve the property in accordance with that. The representative of the applicant is here tonight, we've arranged for them to so modify the map, so there'll be a decision available for the April 6th meeting.
Okay. I'll make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes the J.Jet Holdings 199 Mariner Drive till the April 6th meeting, for written approval.
Correct.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Flagpole Lot.
Decision in the file on 24 Pulaski Street approving the application as amended. Affirmative vote on the motion will be to approve the application.
I have, it's Lucy, that's the motion to vote on Lucy's board, but this is, remember Gary wanted to do, was that to do with the fence?
Yep.
It's 24 Pulaski Street? Okay, great, yep.
Yep, we had a conversation with Gary.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution as written?
I second that.
All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
That has to do with, sorry, John. That has to do with Bennett's fence.
Get it, get it, you gotta grab it.
The fence.
Skyfall Barnhart, 68 Barnhart Street.
Thank you.
Is there a decision in the file, I can't remember, I thought there was, but I don't-
Not on 68 Barnhart, there was the outstanding question about the covenant, in order to make sure that if the properties got separated in the future, that we come back to the planning board, and since then it has drafted language for that, and it's for you to review.
You guys got to take, have to take a look at it.
So that should be corrected, then, to adjourn for all purposes?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it was going to be covenant for future separation, Bo.
Correct.
Yep.
New, new form of legal conveyancing out here.
Well, what it is, is a covenant that the property can remain as is until there is a, a transfer of one of the lots.
So this could be put on-
We were referring to it last meeting as a realty prenup.
A realty post-nup, man, come on.
Make a motion at the request of the applicant to adjourn for all purposes to the April 6th meeting, the Skyfall Barnhart, 68 Barnhart Street.
Secondation.
All in favor?
Aye, thanks very much.
Lucy Bushman at 437 Hill Street.
No good, the fence is in.
A decision is in the file approving the application as submitted, and affirmative vote on the motion will be to approve the application.
I'll move that.
A motion to vote on the resolution?
For Lucy Bushman?
Second.
All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Yes. Concludes the Flagpole Lots, and-
This is, excuse me, before I move on, this is the neg deck for J.Jet, that goes into the file. Got to be signed.
Beconic Land Trust, 296 Hampton Road.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, we did discuss this at the non-work session about a week ago.
This is, this is the land trust?
Yes, this is the land trust.
Right.
What you have before you is a, a copy of the decision of the Board of Zoning Appeals, which granted the necessary variances to allow an addition to the existing land trust building, which is going to be moved slightly closer to Hampton Road, and also the construction of a separate two-story office adjunct to the Beconic Land Trust operation. What you should have in your file is a site plan that shows those details. We've also submitted a landscape plan, which is a little bit different from what we submitted to the Board of Appeals, because we've had a nice discussion with one of the two abutting neighbors, and we've agreed to plant some plantings on his side of the property line, so as to screen things out, and we're also helping him further by eliminating an encroachment that the right-of-way that accesses the property to the east has been located on his property for some time. In addition, I submitted to you some floor plans and elevations, schematic floor plans and elevations prepared by the Honorable John David Rose, who's sitting in the front row. And so this is a, this is a pre-submission conference-
Status is getting updated.
That's right.
Still pre.
So this is a pre-submission conference, the, the purpose of which is to make sure that you're generally comfortable with the, the layout, and then we'll obviously submit a formal site plan that has a lot more information on it, including lighting, maybe more details of landscaping, and things of that nature, and then whatever drainage information is required by the village engineer. But the main purpose is to make sure that you're comfortable with the, with the layout as proposed. Now, one thing I did mention at the work session was that an actual benefit to this project will be that currently there are, as you may know, there are two curb cuts that leave, leave Old Town Road to access this property, one of which, the southerly one of which is the easement, which also services the Marin property, and a northerly one which serviced strictly the parking lot for the land trust. That northerly curb cut's going to be eliminated, so we think that that will have a positive benefit on, on traffic. As I say, the Board of Appeals did grant the necessary relief, including shifting the zoning district boundary line to coincide with the south property line, and also to grant the necessary setback relief for the proposed construction, which is relatively minor relief, and as an aside, the, all of the required off-street parking will be provided on-site. So I think that's, that's it in a nutshell. If you have any questions of me or of Mr. Rose, you can fire away.
You're, you're tearing down the building that's, that's in the parking area-
Yep, right, the house.
And then moving the existing building onto the parking area, so net-net, there's no parking laws.
Right, there's no, there's no parking laws. Actually, we're increasing parking, we're actually adding parking, so that all of the required parking is going to be on this site. We're going to, going to be getting rid of that two-story house, and we're taking, as I say, we're taking the existing land trust office and sliding it to a conforming setback from Hampton Road.
So this, this building, which is up here, gets slid back to conform to their, their proposed, in addition to the breezeway, and then this new building, which is the-
These.
This is, this is the breezeway, and then the new-
And what was opening on Old Town Pod, so that they're coming from the back and getting up there.
I think it's an improvement, so.
Down in the basement next door.
You might ask why we're doing this. One of the reasons is, right now, the land trust is renting space in the basement of the, of the property to the east of it, and they want to-
John Holsey says he has two big as staff. Come on, the land trust is rolling. They want to get together.
They want to be all, one big happy family.
After a winter like this, they don't like to commute.
Who does? So that's it.
So, you don't have to do anything formal, except to, if you're okay with the general layout, then we'll do a formal site plan. Make a submission.
It seems to me the major issue is this slight intrusion from a zoning point of view a few feet into a residential area where there's already-
We don't adjourn or anything, they, they just do it on their own, right?
It's already, it's already a road there, and there's a-
It's already a road, so it's not a material intrusion into a residential 2.5 area or something like that, it's-
As I say, and the fact that we're going to be landscaping, it's actually going to make the existing situation better, and the two neighbors that directly abut are happy.
That helps.
That helps. So with, with your blessing, I'll go forth and send no more on that one.
I don't, I don't-
We don't, we don't do anything, we just-
I don't see any reasons not to go ahead.
Just keep going, the not to go ahead is all I, all I want.
Keep going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Southampton Town Newspapers, 135 Windmill Lane.
That is also myself, and as I mentioned at the work session, this matter also went to the Board of Zoning Appeals for one variance, an eternal setback variance, and also for permission to locate certain of the parking closer to the street than, and than an old covenant would have allowed, but the Board of Appeals gave relief from that covenant. In fact, the parking meets the current zoning requirements. And there was also a question raised, by the way, as to whether or not this proposed new building would have a transitional yard issue, and I've researched it, and I've talked to Jonathan Foster, the building inspector, I believe Kathy may have spoken to him, and also to Richter Petrus, and they believe that there would not be a transitional yard issue here, in part because I believe this is, this area is grand thought of, you may recall, you probably should, but a number of years ago, you granted a site plan approval to add a considerable issue on the back of the press building, which is actually closer to the Cooper Hill townhouses that are behind it, plus the fact even after the Cooper Hill townhouses were constructed, we got a site plan approval to shift the existing garage, so there's, there's been activity in that area already, but I think everyone is satisfied we do not have a transitional yard issue.
And this is closer to the garages?
Yeah, it's, in fact, it's better than where the addition was, because the addition would have been opposite the residences, this is opposite the garages, that's right.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
So this is the existing press building, this thing's going to be tucked into this little thing.
That's, that's exactly right, the, where we're going to be constructing is going to be opposite the garages for the Cooper Hill town-
Just to east of the garage, basically.
And the library, by the way, had, the only setback variance we needed for the building was from an internal line for the library, and they had no problems, that abuts their storage building. So they were, they were. So again, if, if you don't have any strenuous objections, I'll, I'll move forward.
I'll keep going.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Last item on the agenda for discussion is the Roscoe Farms. Southampton Town has requested us to review the application, and there's an agency request for determination of, what, lead agency status. The Village of Southampton's interest in this lot is very, very minor compared to the overall size of the lot, given that it's, it's my opinion that we want to accede to the town's request to be lead agent for this application.
So, I don't know if you have to actually vote on that, but you're directing, you're directing me actually to get in touch with them and send this in as an official response from the planning board.
I'll move to notify them.
Second.
Their lead.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
And remember, just tell them, if you would, for me, as a nearby property owner along with others in this room, drainage is the real issue of that area. Moving this out of that railroad track there goes into the end of, the Hedy Creek end of Wing, or whatever you call it, of Shinnecock Bay. And it's, it has been a real runoff water issue for all the houses that lie between that lot and getting to the Hedy Creek. Very times a year, it's an issue, it affects the road, it affects Tuckahoe Lane, and the drainage from St. Andrews Development.
Great.
You tell them, we're aware of it in the village. I don't know what else we can do.
They should contain everything that they're generating on that site.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a great field for drainage when we're not frozen, and when it's not, you really get, you can get some great plumbing.
Okay, we're aware of it.
We will review the minutes at the next work session, the next work session will be March 30th at 5:00 PM. The next public meet session, public meeting will be April 6th at 5:30 PM. With that said, if there's no additional business, may I have a motion to...
That's, that's Monday, it's Easter Monday. One of these away, Easter's the day before, in case you want to help, calendar goes this year. So people are off-town and taking the kids to Disney World, it's Monday, after Easter.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.